Would you please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
John Condeno, would you like to come to the podium?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, good evening.
Good evening.
I wanted to come down tonight. It's sort of an auspicious occasion because we're closing out literally the ready project, the new docks, et cetera. So, we've got a couple of actions that the board has before them. One is a, is the last change order. And what this change order is, is just when we do our over and under, what we call on the bid items, their unit pricing. This is sort of a reconciliation of the accounts. So, it shows $19,155.97, but that money is still within, was within the overall contract costs and money available. So, it's more of an accounting issue than it is anything. But that closes up the contract. Then later on in the invoices you guys will be approving, you'll have the final payment application that will go with DC Builders. So, closes out the project. Wanted to tell the board how much we appreciate working with Terry and DC Builders and board. I know the mayor's the one that's been with us from the beginning. Listen, thankfully, I think the approach worked well. It certainly proved to be a very, you know, successful setup as we ended up with this past year. So, again, thanks for the continued support. One of the things Terry was just telling me is he was actually successful in getting some salvage out of the one section. Terry, what'd you say?
65.55 for the dog leg section.
And then, and then the two gangways?
Yep. The 11 foot was 1,100 and the 22 footer was 3,300. So, a total of 10, almost 11 grand.
Almost 11 grand for those, which is good. So, again, it kind of brings this project to a close and into the next chapter.
No more.
Oh, there'll always be more. There'll always be, which is good. It's moving ahead. Listen, I will say that, you know, I give the village of Clayton credit. You know, we keep a boat in Alex Bay. And I will tell you that the difference between the activity in Alex Bay, take this weekend for instance, in Clayton, is 90 days. Seems everybody comes down here. So, the investments that you've made over time have really paid off tremendous.
And the docks have been fairly full since they've been put in.
Oh, yeah.
Which is wonderful. Does anyone on the board have questions for John?
Yeah, I have a question, John. Since I'm in this a little bit late. So, it says the original contract price is $5 million, yeah, change basically.
Yep.
And then now it's, and then the final price, am I reading this right? The final price was 5.7 million, is that right? So, it's a 700,000 total contract.
And that's with the change orders, et cetera, that occurred over the life of the project.
Over the life of it and just little things here and there. Can you highlight some of the, you know, reasons for the change? Again, I'm late in this as far as, you know, like big things that we changed.
You know, interesting, like, let me phrase it this way. This was a five-plus-million-dollar project. And I will tell you that with working with DC Builders was absolutely fabulous because most of the items were relatively small. They were all betterment items, you know, as he worked along with his crew. And for a project of this size, in this complexity, I mean, when you start thinking about what was done out there. And really, some of the work, you know, was like excavating ancient history, some of the issues that, you know, that were found, they took care of everything. And there, I don't think there were, this is what, change, 14, but 13 change orders were all relatively small again. And there were a lot of betterments, you know, in the project. So, overall, it worked out extremely well. We're all, we were able to stay within the funding.
To follow up with John, the projects that we have done and done recently with DC Builder have all come in under budget.
Yeah, so the original.
So, the changes, and as John was saying, you know, recently, some of the changes down there was, all right, we put in the solar lights. That was a positive. We put in, we had on the new attenuator, we put in the composite rather than just regular planks. So, it was all, like John is saying, betterments, not, not like whoops, we really screwed up in our.
It wasn't.
Yeah.
And I'll tell you, this over and under change order, the last one you're doing, the $19,000, that's all related to the Mary Street Dock, and it's all related to the beams that they had to put in 90 feet down in. And they did a, they did a heck of a job with that, I gotta tell you. Yeah, they're down there.
I see. So, it, for example, that wasn't in the original, but when you got into it, it's like this makes more sense, so that was.
So, so, the way they were priced was, it was a per-foot price?
Yeah, right.
Yeah. So, what you end up doing is you end up using a few more feet, which, which, you know, is pretty typical with something like that. But to watch those guys do that, what a challenging project, part of the project that was. But again, you know, they never, they never submitted a claim saying, wow, there's changed conditions, and this cost us more money. The nice thing about it was, everything that came up was, well, you know, we could do this, this, and this to better the project. So, it was a real pleasure, gotta say.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Thanks, John.
Good.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, it looks great. I mean, all of it, yes.
All right.
So, we could motion for change order number 15.
I'll make the motion in a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're good. Thank you, John, very much.
Be back.
Yeah, yeah, I know you'll be back. Dave Wilder?
Yes.
Up to the podium, please. I think everyone on the board knows Dave, our new zoning officer.
Yep. I know your name, we haven't met. Bob McDown.
Bob McDown. Mike Kenny. Robert Riddon. Trustee Weersby. Robert Weersby. Yes. We got a lot of Robs.
Yes.
Welcome, Dave.
Yeah, well, thanks. It's been quite a whirlwind three and a half weeks now. So, getting up to speed on things. Delved into some permits, I think I did seven permits, minor sheds and porches. Attended zoning boarding meeting for, we have one variance request, which got tabled, I believe. And then attended the planning board meeting for two site plan maps that we reviewed, a third got deferred. So, we're still kind of working on those two that were requested for more information. I have reached out to those owners and offered my assistance, that if anything, I'll go between some of the things that they may not have known they need, and we heard about, if they needed resources, like who to talk to. So, that seems to have been fairly receptive of that, of the zoning meeting. I did go to visit that property before the meeting, so I was able to talk to the both husband and the wife, got an idea of what they were doing, what they were trying to do. So, when we got to the meeting, I was up to par. Same thing with the site plans. I met with the catalogs, I met with the boat museum, and I met with B-Side. Just trying to get myself out there into the public, speaking with people, not offering all the answers and having all the solutions, but offering a, and a resource for them. So, and now I'm into training from, never mind, from crazy training. I was down in Syracuse all day earlier today, got training tomorrow night. It's been fairly helpful.
What did you train? What was your class about today?
Today was the interactions between the zoning board and the planning board.
Very good. Very, very, yeah. Yes, very good.
And the hot topic was short-term rentals.
Yes.
So, and kind of get a lot of it. And then they, what is it, the amendment 78 process, which based on that. So, areas that I'm getting more knowledgeable about, that I was not quite knowledgeable about.
Great.
Tomorrow night is local Jefferson County zoning board and planning board stuff.
Good.
It's going fairly well. So, any questions, comments, advice?
I got a couple of questions. So, when someone's applying for a new zoning permit, because you're the zoning permit guy, right? Do they get any sort of a checklist? And I know that, I know it's in the, you know, village, but I'm just curious with the processes right now. Like, do they get a, you have to submit this, you have to submit this, you have to submit this type thing, or they just have to go and look themselves?
That's one of the reasons I've been reaching out. We're in the process of developing a checklist.
Okay.
What we had, what we did also do, and I did not mention, was that we did get some additional fillable PDF files on our website, one for the permit itself. The only one we had up was a variance. It's like, well, you need the permit before you can take it. We got that. And then we also put up a calendar for the ZDA meeting and the planning board meeting, identifying when those meetings are, and if you are bringing something to that meeting, then you have to have that information to me two weeks in advance of that meeting.
Right.
So, that was the first step. Next step is two weeks in advance with this checklist of items to bring. The concept that we've been promoting is that I get it for a week, I get to speak with the landowner, property owners, whatever it be, go through it to make sure that we've got all the information, then present it to the board in a more complete version than I believe what they've been getting.
Great.
So, and then I've got knowledge also to discuss with the board as needed versus, I don't know, I'll see Monday, or I'll see Thursday.
Right.
Which doesn't help any of us.
And then we're going to be more strict as far as deadlines and things like that?
Yes.
Yeah, fantastic. And then when does a permit go to the county planning board? Like, what is the, do they have to review, you know, like, do they have to review all of them, some of them, and what's the criteria there?
That, I do not know that answer.
Yeah.
I have not run into that. Right now, I'm just dealing with the town.
Yep.
And using that resource that I still have for like another 90 days or something like that. So, I'm taking on the zoning part, I'm taking on writing up the permits, I'm taking on the (inaudible).
Oh, I know, you got a lot.
No, it's just a process. Then the building permits, then goes, we're still going through the town right now.
Okay.
We haven't gotten to a position where we've had to go to the county.
Okay. Yeah, so I remember, again, in a different village, that, I think if it was a certain size, it would actually go to the county as well, in the county, but, you know, also review it because of potential wire duration.
Yeah.
Okay. If you could, if you could find that out, maybe tell us in the next one or two.
It's in the, you can see it in the town code?
It is.
And something that I real, that I have learned, maybe you all already know this, that you have the town code, and then you have a supplemental of the village code. So, when you go to the village code and look, you may say, well, where is that? I don't see it in here. You have to go to the town code. And all of that is explained in the town code.
But also county too?
About when you need to go to the county. It's not, yeah, it's all, it is all in there.
Right.
I've spent time looking at it.
Yeah, that'd be something too, I think, that, you know, of potential.
It's a hierarchy that we're learning. So, it's a village, goes to town, goes to the county.
But I love that you're, you know, trying to streamline things and get things in an organized, disciplined, deadline-oriented fashion thing.
Well, we met with two ZDA members and two planning board members, what, a week and a half ago, two weeks ago? And that went well to hear what their questions and concerns were and are. We also recognized that there's not a lot of interaction between ZDA and planning, and maybe that needs to happen a little bit more. But we, we got some very good ideas that Dave has started to implement.
It does.
Rather quickly, I would say, yes.
Seems to be a communication gap.
Yes.
Trying to fill that.
Yes.
And that's why I love the idea of getting information beforehand, two weeks beforehand, I get to review it with the board members and, or prior. Then I, then I submit it to the board saying, I've reviewed this, and here are, here are the pitfalls, here are the concerns.
Right.
You know, that we need your support.
Nice. Okay, thank you.
And we know in every project there's going to be.
Oh, yeah, same.
I can't meet your deadline, well, then you may have to wait for a little while.
Yep.
But the thing that the, what we're trying to promote is, it may delay you one month, but it's not going to delay you five months.
Right.
And that's, you know, the kind of the things that we're seeing now, where they're not getting the communication, they're not getting all the upfront checklist, like you alluded to, you know, making sure that they have all that information upon submission, because it's, it's a waste of time.
Yeah.
You know, and you gotta keep coming back, and then there's another issue, keep coming back, and another issue. I'd like to get all the issues resolved. There will always be, we need more information, that's fine. You know, we're prepared for that. It's not, let's not do, we need more information every single month for six months.
Right.
So, if we can streamline it to three months, that's a, that's a success.
That's good for everybody. It's good both for the developer as well as the village and the village people, yeah. Why I'm saying.
So, in reference, while Dave is here, in reference to the email I sent out over the weekend, do you want him to come once a month? Do you want, you want to report? We talked about it, we really didn't know what the board wants, because I, I speak with Dave a couple of times a week, so I don't know what you're looking for. Is it just, I did seven permits and I brought in $7,000? I don't know.
That's the requirement of our ordinance.
Well, I understand that, but what do you want? You just want to know how much money brought in? I don't know what you want to know.
I mean, there's as much detail as you're willing to give us, but at least to the amount of the ordinance, which we haven't seen, we saw it twice this year.
Okay.
So, at least that much, but as much as you're willing to give us, we'd be happy to see it.
I would love to share the opinion.
Yep, absolutely.
Well, I think it creates more awareness all the way down.
Yeah, I'm being facetious about that.
I mean, I think once a month, to me, I don't.
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh, yeah. No, 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 it's not going to be twice a month.
It's very similar to what Jeff does, he moves the water stuff, once one applies for water service. We sort of know the address, who it is, and just something a little more detailed than six permits this month.
Right.
Worth $200. Yeah, we want to know who and what, right. Just a little. We don't need all the details.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't have that, I was not quite sure.
Oh, no, that's right. No, that's part of why I had him come.
We appreciate that you're here.
And then if you find that any point that you need, that you want him to come to a meeting, you know, let us know.
Yeah.
Dave lives in the village, so he could accommodate us as much as possible.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Glad to have you here.
Okay, thanks, I'm glad to be here.
So, I want you to stay also for a moment, and maybe we'll discuss it now. The discussion is about violations, as it said, do, in the email. Do you all have questions, comments, what you want, how you want that? That's what the chief has said?
What, I'm sorry, what has the chief said?
All right, so here's, here's how, here's how it goes.
Yeah.
If it's a Chapter 132 for zoning, then that is handled by zoning codes individual. And they get whatever the ticket is, letter, et cetera, et cetera. If it's anything out of Chapter 132, then that goes to either DPW or to the police.
Yeah.
It does not go to codes or zoning. If it goes to, if we write something outside of Code 132, then that is prosecuted by the village attorney, not the court here. Isn't that correct?
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
Okay, thank you.
What do you mean by prosecute? So, we have to pay the village attorney to?
Yes.
To?
To prosecute, whatever that may be. So, you, you left your car in the street for two weeks and you went to an island. That wouldn't be a code ticket, that would be a police ticket. And we can write them the ticket or say, hey, you owe us X number of dollars, but in order to get it, it has to be prosecuted by the village attorney.
Not by the DA? If it's a, if it's a police issued ticket?
Well, that's possible, but I, that's all possible. I don't know all, I don't know all the ins and outs, but it's going to, it's not just as simple as, here's your ticket for $250.
Right.
Come and pay it and go.
Oh, no, absolutely. But, yeah, I mean, my, maybe I'm wrong, that the, if it's a criminal matter and.
Oh, well, criminal would be different. I'm talking about, you left your car on the side of the road.
To the best of my knowledge.
That tie got criminal.
Correct you guys in, for me, but to the best of my knowledge, local codes such as municipal codes, things like that, the DA's office doesn't, the district attorney's office in Jefferson County doesn't handle those. It's typically that jurisdiction, such as the village, plea lawyer, like, when I was in the city, it was the city attorney that they handled the municipal code tickets.
Huh.
Yeah, because that puts us.
Sorry.
As you say, that puts us at a disadvantage, so if we are going to issue a ticket, we actually have to pay for it to be prosecuted by a private law firm. That seems weird. We should look into that.
So, having gotten a couple of tickets in my life, there is a checkmark on there that says, I plead guilty, here's my check, and I mail it into the local court.
Yeah, like a regular vehicle and traffic ticket.
And if I should choose to fight it, then I show up and represent myself in front of the local court. I don't remember an attorney being on the other side, but could be.
Well, for, for traffic court.
Town, water town, for a matter, for that matter, yes. Go ahead. For, well, that wouldn't have to be a, leaving a car on the street, it's a traffic violation, right? You leave a car abandoned for two weeks, you're going to get a ticket for leaving it there for two weeks. So, I mean, that to me is like a simple thing the police should handle. Running, we mentioned, previous meeting, Mike mentioned running stop signs. That's, that's a matter of, the police handle that. You get a ticket for it, you pay it, you want to fight it, you can fight it, but it's the policeman that shows up and says, I witnessed him run the stop sign. The same thing with any kind of motor vehicle violation. I mean, if they want to argue to that point, I think there was a case here many years ago where somebody said, it wasn't any ordinance to do 30 miles an hour, so therefore I shouldn't have to do 30 miles an hour. And so, if they want to argue that, then yeah, we're going to, and they're, you know, we're going to run up the charges against them, and that's it. So, I just think that it's a matter of enforcement, and what we, our rules need to be enforced. And, and that's it. If it's a zoning issue, it's a zoning issue, but back to the court issue, if the, I think, my understanding is that the board authorizes the zoning officer to enforce that, then he is our representative. We make him our representative in the local village court, and he prosecutes it. If they want to take it further than that and go to state supreme court, yes, we hire a lawyer, bring the town, bring the village lawyer in. But to me, a warning letter is the way to start. A warning from the police is a way to start. I don't want to ticket you, but I will, and that sort of thing, and a couple of warning letters is a way to go. And finally, if you have to put your foot, plant your foot in the ground and say, this is the way it's going to be, then of course we have to, we have to prosecute it, so. But if you're just going to say, I don't want to do it because, you know, it's going to cause harm, that's, I mean, then no one's going to, it's like the, you're familiar with the broken windows thing, right? So, it's, you know, if you allow so many broken windows, then they, they're bigger crimes you're easier to commit. But if you let the little ones go, that's the purpose of broken windows, is that it's, you prosecute broken windows.
Yeah, so I'm in agreement with Bob, that, yeah, that you're, I think it also puts more oomph to it, if you do, you know, issue the ticket, and then, but as far as, yeah, having, my concern was that, I don't think the village attorney needs to prosecute. I think, yeah, if you show up and say, yep, you know, we saw this happen, and then the judge decides, and they could always appeal it, and then we bring in the village attorney, like you said, the state supreme court. But, because I think one thing we're doing is we're almost afraid to enforce it because it's going to cost us money, and then that's, you know, I mean, we pay good money for police department, and we're very well pleased, so let's, let's use it. And that way, people, so I think there's a rep right now that we can kind of do anything and nothing's going to happen. And this has nothing to do with you, it's just that, you know, this.
I don't think that that's completely true.
I'm not talking about criminal stuff, but I'm talking about more with the.
More with what?
The zoning and the codes enforcement. That's what I'm talking about. Not, not criminal, not, not the normal.
All right. I know what you guys want, and that's an argument that we continue to have. No, I don't think that it would be Dave or Tom's job to walk down James, walk down Riverside Drive every day and say, oh, your sandwich board's in the wrong spot, oh, your closer out there. You're going to create an extremely hostile community, according to me.
No, I'm sorry.
And I think that that's, I guess I don't understand what, what you're looking for.
No, I'm not referring to, I'm not referring to that specific thing. I'm just saying, I think we're on the same page.
I think we are, because we have new people.
Yeah, I think we are.
And so, I do think that things will get much, much better because of the new, new individuals, individual that we have.
Right.
I think it's going to be fine.
Somebody leaving their car on the street for two weeks or whatever, yeah.
But that's not a code, so it's a police.
Right.
But it's not code.
But, all right, what about an abandoned car?
That would be police.
Property.
Police.
Yeah, that's on top.
Right.
So, right. Okay, so the point is, I think the one point is that the village attorney does need to get involved so early, that'll save us money. The second point is that you guys are, yeah, going to be aware of it, and it sounds like we're going to be enforcing things better. Thank you.
And I would also like to say, here with the police, we had a situation in the last two weeks that was handled very well by the police. They did as much as they could do, but it was also handled very well by the community. And the community let many people know immediately, and the police were able to take care of it. Officer Shaw Cross was very involved with one of them, he's been with two of them, and they've been right on top of it. And they're, and so what I'm also trying to say is that, no, the police department's very well aware of what's going on, also with the other situation that we have in town. Very well aware of what's going on, and is doing everything within their power to, to get it corrected. They're not just letting it slide and drinking.
Oh, no, I wasn't saying that at all.
Drinking coffee everywhere and not doing their job. They, the past, I would say, the part of the summer's been extremely busy, but this one individual that came into town a week and a half ago and was causing havoc, he's currently in water town.
I'm not familiar with what you're talking about, but.
Oh, you know about it.
Please don't misunderstand, I was not, I think you're doing a great job. I'm just saying, I think it's good that we're also getting you involved in this other thing too. And, thank you.
So, I want to thank the community for their involvement, especially with that individual, because it was extremely helpful with what it was.
Yeah, I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah, you know, you know, but I'll tell you.
Okay.
It was all over Facebook, so.
I don't.
So, okay, so we have a clarity on that.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions? More questions? Do you have any questions for, for the officer tonight?
No, he's doing a great job. Thank you again, welcome.
Yes, he's doing, they both are. Thank you, gentlemen. Terry Jones.
Good evening, everybody. You all should have a copy of the DPW activity report for the last couple of weeks. As you can see, I've got lots of pictures on the report there. We've been busy. You can see the stairs are gone, the elevator's gone downtown. Definitely opens things up. I think it looks a lot better. They'll be back, hopefully, in the next week or two to finish the face show and do the ring gutters along the backside of that. Also, we did the pavers. We reinstalled the pavers on the lawn. We thought about maybe putting tables on there, but then I kind of wanted to pull the board or maybe even the people in the village, or what, you know, do we leave them bare? Is it show disrespect by putting a table on there? You know, because they're in memory, and some of them are in memory of people, so if anybody has any comments and what you think, we have a bench on one and we've left the other one open. But all ears, if anyone has any ideas for that.
Yeah, I guess the people that paid for those pavers.
Yeah.
So.
Right. Right. So, you know, people look at it in a different way, I guess, you know, some, you know, you don't want to tread on them or, you know, just showing them off, but they were, were walking on them on the roof, and they had benches on the roof. So, you know, it's six of one, half a dozen of the other. But, you know, I'm open for suggestions if anybody has any ideas. By all means, let me know.
Is the, are the, I haven't really gone.
It's hard to, you got to carry down there. It's hard to.
Is it all, like, is the whole thing all pavers with people's, or is it just some of the bricks aren't somewhere?
Um, the one, the first one, so the one on the west side has three blanks in the middle, I believe. And then the other one is all full of the pavers.
Yeah, because my thought was if you bought this brick for your grandfather, whatever, and now there's two bolts and bench in it. But if that was a plain brick, then that would be okay.
Right. And we wouldn't, we wouldn't secure those benches and don't, wouldn't intend on. Originally, we were thinking maybe concrete benches, that way nobody could pick them up.
Yeah, yeah.
While they could, I guess. That, that one guy around the village probably could by himself, but other than that, you know, that's kind of what we had in mind, but.
Yeah, we can put the word out to your people.
Sure. Okay. Also, I just wanted to remind everyone that brush pickup is October 15th. One time only. Of course, you know, we're, we're nice guys and we go around periodically and pick stuff up anyway, but that kind of helps us when that day comes along, so we don't have quite a massive amount of brush to pick up. And as also John Condino touched on, we did auction off the 11-foot gangway, the 22-foot gangway, and the dock for a total of $10,955. Steve Hall got the two gangways, and Dora Marine got the dock. Actually, I think it's more money than the village technically paid because everything was 5% of, you know, we only paid 5% of, what, 50 grand on the dock? So, you know, at the end of the day, I think we did very well, better than I expected, to be honest with you.
I know.
I was very pleased with the opening on Friday. And I think that's all that I have. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Yeah, speaking of auctions, are you going to auction off the stairs and the elevators?
The intent, yes, we plan to. We actually were getting a new state rack in December, and we were maybe thinking about putting that in with the auction, the elevator, the stairs, and that truck. And we have some other items that we're cleaning out, the old barn, that Lyons building. So we may find some other items that we could auction off also.
Great. Thank you. And you'll publicize that in the TIC?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And sometimes with a truck, you might make auctions international. Because, you know, you're shooting it out there for a lot more people.
And elevators international, too.
Yeah, elevators international. Doesn't seem to be too much, uh, somebody might want it, but.
Thank you.
I just would like to make a comment. We're going to put some signs up here at the, both the basketball and the tennis court. We don't want bikes, scooters in there. There's already some bike marks on the tennis court. We don't want dogs going in there. You know, there's a variety of things. They need to be used what they're used for. So we are going to be putting up signs, ask, not asking, don't, please don't do this.
I'm wondering, because I see a lot of, like, you know, little kids just learning how to ride their bike in there, you know, like,
Right.
Would that be okay because they're little ones?
You know, that's a whole different animal.
And I know.
Because they're not
Well, you know, you got a kid that's in there. They're not spinning their tires and hitting the brakes and tearing it up, I don't think, unless they're, you know, bionic or something, but.
But there's already skid marks in the tennis.
Yeah.
There's some kids playing on purpose.
And they play on the tennis net, you know, they're bouncing back and forth. And that's why we kind of block that, those two sections off so that, because they used to meet. We thought maybe that would deter them, because then now they got to walk all the way out and around and then come into the tennis court, where before all they'd do is ride their bikes or whatever on that side. So maybe in the future, we could put, put a couple of gates there. We could lock them or unlock them, you know, or, or whatever. It looks great. Those, the basketball court game, great, and having that extra.
And it's being well used, I think.
Basket at the other end definitely sets a new element to it that we never had. So like, you know, definitely something, something very good for the kids.
Any other questions? Okay.
Good.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Jeff Mosher.
Hello, everybody. Thank you again for allowing me to brief you on the water and sewer departments' August events. I provided a copy of the month's report to the village board last week. I'm just going to touch on some of the main bullets. This past month, myself updated the emergency response plans and the vulnerability assessments for the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plan. These documents are required by the EPA and DOH. They do not need board approval, but I would encourage anyone to have review of them and offer any suggestions for anything we might have missed. As you know, this, this process identifies and evaluates security weaknesses in our system. Therefore, the documents are deemed confidential. Myself, Joanne, and Amanda will be able to provide a copy for you upon request. We did have a new water and sewer application that met the, my department's approval on 625 Alexandria Street. So this is ready for municipal approval once the checks are received. I spoke with Mr. Baker last week, who said he put them in the mail, so we should be seeing them soon. We also have an application that's currently under review for the new boat shop at the Antique Boat Museum. Myself and my engineering team is going to be looking a little closer at the oil-water separating that they're identifying, putting into this sewer lateral. So we've got some, some specification requirements that we'll be looking at there. Also, they do require a fire suppression. So there unfortunately will be a road cut. So I know that Mary Street is undergoing microsealing currently. I talked with the DPW superintendent, Terry. So we're both under agreeance that they should be pushed onto the Riverside Drive access. We have a water lateral and a sewer lateral already connecting to the parcel that crosses the street. Unfortunately, due to the requirement to the fire suppression, we need to cut another line into that water vein. Their application is still under review. Nothing's been approved yet. We did have a great month. Our, our percent solid content greatly increased from our sludge hauling contractor. And we had a monthly average of 1.08, probably due to the much larger trailer that he just recently equipped himself with. We're able to get the sludge off-site quicker. It's a lot thicker and it, it, it's a lot more money savings for us. We don't want to call them water if we could, if we could help it. So we also had our preventative maintenance performed. The last preventative maintenance we had, we had 18 flake pumps throughout the village and out of the village that are in these wet wells, submersible pumps. These pumps, we have some in River Shore Pump Station. There's, there's also some at the Ree Street, Washington Island, and Bay Lane Pump Stations. Those pumps, all eight pumps, have reached their shelf life. They are now 20 years old. I scheduled the permanent maintenance this year because we had some new pumps that were put into the system with the capital project. I wanted to kind of get a baseline of, of condition, so we have something to work off of years going. We do invest in the flake pumps. They are kind of the gold standard of submersible pumps. They started in the early 1900s in Sweden. They're very reputable. We have GA Fleet is our contractor that performs the preventative maintenance. They specialize in nothing but light pumps. So I'd like to encourage their, their contract services. And this is something that I would like to perform every two to three years, so this won't be an annual thing. So upon this most recent inspection, they determined the pumps at River Shore Drive are in need of wear rings, impellers, and handles. The, the pumps are actually about 30 feet down in a hole, and they use a crane system to lift them out. Handles that are equipped to the pumps are actually corroded to the point that they're not sure they're going to be able to get the pumps out of there. So I'm, I sought replacement costs for the handles, the wear rings, and the impellers. I will develop a memo and have a better idea of what it's going to cost to repair versus replace. Now, replacing these pumps is going to cost $23,000 to replace both pumps. This is something I could enter into the next fiscal year's budget plan. We could do it that way. That being said, we also have three other pump stations whose pumps are that same age. They weren't as bad of condition as the pumps found on River Shore Drive. However, we may want to consider replacing them in their entirety. So I did see quotes for replacement for those pumps. To replace all eight pumps throughout our, our four different pump stations, it would be $81,000. So again, this is something that I could work in, tease into the budget, look for cost savings elsewhere, maybe come up with a plan, just hit our, our most crucial ones first, the ones that are in most repair, most needed repair. But again, I'll know more when I, I receive the cost estimates back to get those parts replaced on those pumps. So that's about it for the wastewater system. And for the water system, we passed our third quarter disinfection byproduct tests. So basically, every quarter, we have to run throughout the village and collect samples at different endpoints in our distribution system. And the test in the lab is, is testing for any disinfection byproducts like chloramines that are, are given off in the system from chlorine reacting with the organics. And some of these byproducts are known to be carcinogenic. Last, last year, we failed our third quarter test, so this year we implemented an auto flusher on the stand pipe. And we, we were able to get the frequency of flush down perfectly this year. We did very well. Our August test is always our hardest test to pass. Just the climate, the condition, the turnover. So with that auto flusher in line, it really greatly helped things. We're in good shape for our fourth quarter. We shouldn't have to be fighting averages because it is an annual average that they look at. So. But that, that is about the major highlight points that I wanted to discuss. If there's anything else.
Yeah.
I got a question on the pumps, going back to the pumps. Did you mention that the replacement of the one pump that needs to be replaced was 21, $23,000, something like that?
It was $11,500 for one pump. There's two pumps in there, so about $23,000 for both of them.
Both of them, but then they're giving you, well, $81,000 for all eight?
For all eight, correct.
Gets us down to 10, over 10,000?
Correct. Yeah. Flight, like I said, is the gold standard. I would anticipate buying a gold standard pump, you're going to get more longevity out of it. That's just my theory. Having these preventative maintenance performed every couple of years, it's not too hard to replace some of the more crucial components of the pump and keep the pump going, in my opinion. I'm also getting a lot of feedback from a lot of these contractors that are saying they're just not building things as good as they used to anymore. So that's something to consider.
Jeff, is it worthwhile to have one or two on the shelf as long as we're buying 10 or 11?
Our system is built with all redundancies. That's why we have two pumps in every station. We can operate on one. When one goes down, we have servicemen on the site to repair it. We usually have things fixed in 48 hours. There are smaller components that we do have backup items for, little recirculating pumps and that for our diaphenous air filter system, the water plant. We do, when I have extra money at the end of the year, that's usually things I like to pick up, plan on our shelf.
What, what do you attribute the, the two pumps being such worse? Because they're all about the same age, right?
Yeah, I, I believe there's probably a little higher hydrogen sulfide content in that wet well. That pump station is, in fact, our deepest wet well of the whole system, so I'm assuming that's, that's the culprit. It's just, it's about 35 feet down. In fact, the company that comes to suck them out every year and clean out the grid on the bottom, they had to add on some extensions and come up with a whole new fabrication for their, for their truck so they could reach the bottom of that wet well. So, yeah, it's quite deep.
So did, do we need, do we need to make, make a decision on these, the pump situation right now, or do you all find prices?
I'm, I'm going to be finding repair costs, prices, but just wanted to keep you guys aware.
Thank you. And the smell situation, are there's much better?
I, I believe so. Again, I'm, I become nose blind over the, the time being there. Honestly, I, I think it's running like a charm. I really do. And I encourage you guys to come over and take a look and use your nose to try to, try to identify exactly where some of these complaints are coming from. I mean, it is a sewage plant. Unfortunately, it's right in the center of our village. So when the wind is blowing just right and the humidity is high, you're going to have those issues. We, we talked about, we, we believe the main issue is probably the sludge holding tanks. That's where all this sludge is being kept for this hauler to come periodically and empty them out. They are on blowers, aerators. If those aerators don't run enough, that will go septic and that will go, go diffus in a hurry. So we, we had the aerators, they're, they're programmed to trigger on for 12 minutes of every hour. So we toyed with the thought of maybe we just keep them off all day. When the aerators aren't on, there isn't any air exchange. So the smell is contained to the water column. And we talked about maybe programming the aerators just to come on at night, maybe 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, send a stink bomb up in the, in the neighborhood. But I think we, we, we toyed with that thought. We thought it probably wouldn't be too good. People have their windows open at night and we're rudely awakened to that.
What's, what's, is there, like, it, it, the biggest issue's always the sun, right?
Correct.
So is there a way to plantings or something that could maybe help a little bit in that area? You know, I don't know, you know, fragrant bushes or something?
We could, we could discover that.
Yeah, that'd be interesting to look into.
That would be. We could discover that. Right now, we use scent socks. It's just a masking agent. We hang them up in our pump stations. They're not good to breathe all the time. You know, they kind of smell like the bathroom.
Yeah. That'd be interesting to figure out if there is something that could, you know, so that way there's a little more of a buffer in general, but also it's, it's a buffer with a better smell and maybe it evens out.
That's, that's a good suggestion. I'm sure it would help with the privacy too, with the neighbors in the back.
Yeah.
Something.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Any questions on the consent agenda? Meetings, payroll, abstracts? Could we have a motion for numbers one through four, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then we have capital projects. Any questions on that? Could I have a motion to accept that?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Joanne?
Uh, this is new business?
Yes.
Sorry. So the town put out a bid. They do this annually for the propane and the, and the oil. And Crispin won the fuel oil bid at a fixed rate of $2.54 per gallon for 2024-25 season. Begins October 4th and ends September 2025. So that's what we, we would be paying to. And then the propane was awarded to Superior Plus Propane. And that is at $1.229, $1.25 per gallon for the same time period.
Were the new members, we have done this for years, joined in with the town, just get a bit of price?
Make sense.
So, wanted everyone to be aware of that and to, so just make, make a motion to approve these two bids?
I'll make a motion.
And second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then the August financial reports. Any questions on those? Just make them, would someone make a motion that you've received, that we've received them? Thank you. And a second?
I'll second it.
All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. I, I did not put this on the agenda, the Lyons building. So I know you've seen the emails back and forth, back and forth. So today I spoke with the president of the Lyons, and yes, they're going to, they're in the process of emptying out. I did offer them with board approval that they, they have a, I don't know if you've been in there, the building. But there's a tremendous amount of memorabilia. There's a lot of awards and things of that nature. And there was a lot of junk in the area. They've been cleaning it. And there was a lot of junk in the area and they've been cleaning it out over the weekend. So what I'd like to propose is that we let them use the back half. So the front of the building is ours, I mean, the whole building is. And then the back half isn't that wide and it's not that big. But that way, they could have a place to have all of their paperwork and their memorabilia and things of that nature as opposed to in someone's basement. And I was going to propose also that we write up a lease or an agreement and that we charge them a very insignificant amount, have the lease for five years and just renew it. That way, everybody knows. She's a new president. A lot of this was started before anyone was on the board.
Makes sense.
So I don't see, we need to be friends and we need to be good friends. And that's why I said, she and I had a very pleasant conversation because I said, this, just emailing is craziness. So we had a very nice conversation today and I told her that I would present it to my board and see what they thought and then she would present to her board tomorrow.
Was there never an agreement developed years ago?
There was an agreement developed years ago and that all fell through the cracks over the years. So the agreement was never updated or, I don't know the last time it was signed, or that we would rent it to them. They gave it to us and then they would rent it back. And there, that just, there was never an update. So my recommendation was not to do it every year because then that starts to get paperwork and tedious, but to do it every five years and have it not be out so long for them.
That everybody forgets.
Yeah, that everyone forgets because she may not be there in five years and vice versa.
Yes.
Exactly.
I think that makes sense.
I like that idea.
That means a very important, you know, local community organization, we should be supportive and yeah, so I think that, I think that way, we have a good paper trail.
That's correct.
And, and I'm glad you reached out and did the old fashioned way.
Yeah, the email thing was, it was driving me crazy, to be honest with you. So anyway, yes, so do I, can I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Now, do we need to establish, sorry, do we need to establish an amount?
Well, we probably should. I was being quite lenient, what do you think? I was just going for a buck.
Yeah, that was my, when you said it, a dollar popped into my head a year.
Great, thank you.
You got to get five dollars for the five years.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, I interrupted the middle of this, so I made a motion.
Yeah, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Interesting weekend, as you all know, that we had the car show here this weekend that was extremely well attended. Last week, last Sunday through Thursday, the Flathead V-eight Fords were in town. That was a very good show, they were excellent people. I had a meal with them and they loved, it's the first time many of them had ever been to Clayton. They're at the hotel, they just loved it. They were very, very happy with all of our services and of course, lovely weather. October third, we're having the Boots and Bonna Club. And that is Austin Healy's will be in for the day. And they'll be in August third. They're taking a tour around the Adirondacks and then they will end up in Clayton for lunch on October the third and their cars will be on display down in the Frank Park area. So that's, that's quite nice also. We have our joint meeting on Wednesday at five. There was some confusion, but it is Wednesday at five for those who can attend. And I'd like to read a letter from a woman who was at the hotel. "My daughter's son-in-law and I spent a week at the Harbor Hotel. It was the first time visiting Clayton, New York. It will be a vacation we will never forget. Not only did we enjoy the many boat rides, museums, light houses, we came away with a feeling of hope. Every person we met was friendly and had something unique to offer. You should be proud of your town, village, and all of it that it has to offer. I'm glad we came and hopefully, we will visit again in the future." So we get a lot of these comments over the years. That's great to see.
Yes.
It's very nice to hear. And that's all I have, gentlemen. What about board reports?
The Chamber met for the first time in the end of the summer because they don't be very in the summer. Everybody's very busy and they reported that a lot of the activities over the summer were very positive and very financially beneficial to the Chamber. And one that was the complete surprise to them as far as the turnout was the balloon festival. Financially, they didn't do as well as they could have, but it's setting the scene, setting the scene for next year and the balloon folks want to come back. They, there were some opportunities to make some more money with that and move better organization as far as what to expect for next year on Chambers' part. They, particularly out at the winery, they had no expectation of that many people showing up. They get moving the balloons around to make accommodations to park cars. The only issue that the balloon pilots have is the river, not because of the water, but because of the border. And they can't go drift, they don't have a choice where the wind blows. So they can't go across the border because that creates all kinds of havoc with the Canadian government. So they have to be very careful. So they were offering tether rides during that time and there's an opportunity for the Chamber to make a few dollars doing that and there's opportunity for the Chamber to bring more balloons next year. So if it didn't go, it was, you got to go, it's incredible, it's incredible. Also, the Chamber is asking for volunteers for the remaining events coming up the end of the year. Pumpkin Chupin is a big one where they need a lot of help. So if you have an opportunity to volunteer for Pumpkin Chupin, that would be a good thing to do.
Great, thank you. Anyone else have anything to say?
Yeah, the Climate Smart Community Group, we're postponing our meeting again until next week. So our tentative date for the public information session is October twenty-eighth, but I think that's pretty definite now.
October twenty?
Yeah, it's twenty-sixth, sorry, that's, hold on, let me get a calendar, I'll make sure. You might dyslexic numbers here. Yes, the twenty-sixth, did I say the twenty-eighth, strike that, twenty-sixth. And the idea is, we want to tell the public what we're thinking and what we're doing on the beginning stages versus, you know, later on, this is what we find. And there's going to be a whole bunch of vendors and/or people that can create public awareness and sustainability. So it should be, should be interesting.
And in reference to the Climate Smart, you were acknowledged in the ANCA newsletter for the heat pumps that are going to be going into this building and the sewer treatment plant. So I thought that was great.
Yeah, definitely.
Clayton Youth Commission didn't meet all summer long. Their first meeting was supposed to be last week. They rescheduled it for tonight. I specifically asked Chelsea about the building because we were wondering what's going on with the building. Is the store the baseball, softball, football equipment? She's looking into that. We'll get back to the item. And the library, not last week, they're having issues with the handicap accessible doors. They're not opening and closing the way that they want them to and it needs to be addressed before winter comes along, so they have some ideas about how to fix that. They're looking into that. It's going to cost some someone wanting to do that. And the rest of the capital improvement project is completed and they're looking for a date to.
Have a celebration.
Say, hey, you did it. We completed that. And just want to echo that the Northeastern Ford V-Ann Club was awesome and see all the people down there and all the colors. Also, a lot of good feedback on Officer Shawcross as well. Thank you. A lot of positive comments coming back because of you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And the T.I. Arts Center is moving along. Last week, they, I think they finished all the abatement inside, I believe. And then last week, they did the Yaboring into John Street and that's all done. I don't know what they're waiting on for the demolition, but it is moving forward.
Yeah, I was talking to the guy doing, it's amazing, so it's basically a water pump that just goes down underneath so they don't have to dig everything up. Yeah, it's amazing.
They were very nice.
That was a long way.
Long way to go.
I don't know how they control it.
It's steering.
But yeah, it's pretty cool.
Yeah. Appears our planning and zoning is going the right direction. We have a lot of problems up until, say, the last couple of months here now. I've been kind of quiet from the last couple of weeks, but it looks like everything we've done has gone right away. Mr. Wilder? That's going good?
No, it's, it was the change that we all needed and it's, and I have to give a lot of thanks today to Joanne, to Amanda. You know, starting from scratch and not, we know, we knew what we were doing per se, but starting from scratch, every, these three have pitched in and really getting it moving forward and that's great to see. Any questions, comments? Has anyone from the public wanted to speak? Sure, three minutes, please.
Hi, Ford.
State your name.
Rhonda Ford. I just recently had an incident at my home where somebody tried to break into my car.
Yes, we're aware of all that, but.
Right, and I'm up here to say how impressed I am by Mr. Shawcross and what he did for us. And I am glad that we hired him. And that's all I have to say. He came back and checked on us to make sure that we haven't been bothered, so thank you.
And we are seriously working on that situation.
Yes, he talked to us about it and, you know, trying to make sure that we were not upset about the situation because it wasn't upsetting. My wife lives in New York City. We got a camera that notified us that we were having a break in. They went to the sheriff's department, which came to Mr. Shawcross. He made it back over to our house in record time, went down the street, found a person and came back and then came back a week later.
Great, thank you. Paul, Anne? Yes, please come up.
Hi, my name is Paul Frickman, Frickman, and thanks for being here. I'm going to back down to Florida a couple of days, be back in April. So a couple of things on my mind, I just thought I'd say it and get it over with. One is the ADA, the handicap parking sign at the boatyard, there is none at the boatyard for handicap parking and it is a restaurant, so I believe they're supposed to have handicap parking. I did see a handicap parking for the marina. The restaurant in Tipoville also does not have any handicap parking, but that's with the town. O'Brien's, when they bring a band, you know, they park on the street the wrong direction. I mean, do they, are they allowed to do that on a Saturday night?
Okay, yeah, we could certainly, I'll look into that.
Yeah, and I appreciate all of it. Union Street, are those sailboats not supposed to be up on stilts? That they're still violating the code or the zoning? And Jeremy's had those boats on stilts. You know, the woman that lives across the street doesn't, used to have a view of the river and she doesn't anymore and I guess he just doesn't pay attention to what he's supposed to be doing and those boats are not supposed to be there, so that's another concern. The abandoned house that Fourth Coast owns on Grave Street, to me, is a fire hazard. It's a, it's a dump. I mean, the guy has, obviously, he's got lots of money, he's very successful. He owns the Sonic Lodge in Watertown and just got a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant to upgrade that, but yet he's got this house that's overgrown, got a broken window, garage door you can walk in. I can go in there anytime I want and it just seems to be, it's just a giant mess. There is a question whether or not we're going to be able to Zoom these meetings. I don't know if it's been brought up so that, like, if I'm in Florida and I'd like to participate, see what you guys are doing and don't know what the cost is, but so that I can, you know, be involved with that and other people in the community can be involved in that because I know you're encouraging people to do that. And I guess the final question is whether or not the audio has been disabled with all the cameras downtown. I know you can play music, but is the audio recording disabled, I guess is the question. So, I don't know.
No, it is not disabled.
It's not disabled, is there plans?
But those cameras are not viewed by anyone.
Okay.
And once we, and I know we've asked since the beginning of the year for a camera policy, we haven't gotten it, but no one views those cameras. There's only two people that have access to it.
And voices aren't recorded? No? Great, thanks very much and thanks for all the work you guys did.
You're very welcome.
Yeah, just, so the video is recorded but not the voices or none of it's recorded?
No, it is recorded. It is recorded, but there is no access. No one here has access besides the police and the DPW. So it's not out there on YouTube and if you want to see the Youtubes, you can see it the next day, our meetings. Chances are slim we'll be Zooming and if we did Zoom, there would be no public participation.
So what is the holdup with that camera policy?
Lawyers just been dragging their feet.
Well, can we, can we, like, I mean, across the state, some other town must have a camera policy.
Well, the reason, so a little background?
Yeah.
Yes, we have been through this for how many months, Joanne? Half of last year, if not the previous year?
So a year.
Trustee Weir's, but we've been through all, we have been through all of this. We've had from various communities, as you're suggesting, and it was decided that we would allow the attorney to handle it because we would spend all this time and then we'd have to send it to the attorney, so just let them. And my interpretation, even though it's important to us, and I'm not being critical of the attorney, it just probably isn't on their front burner.
Could we hire another attorney to do this? I mean, we're not beholden to this one attorney that takes so long to do things. I mean, because this is the first thing that's taken them off. Can we just hire someone else to do this one thing? Is that possible? I mean, it's possible.
Well, anything's possible. Am I inclined to do it? Probably not, only because, you know, my thought is they, you have a history with some of the people and then you change the new history. I only get back in touch, I know the person to contact, I won't actually contact the attorney, I'll contact someone else.
It just seems this particular attorney, since it's my short time here, has taken a long time to do it.
I don't disagree with you.
So one would just get it different.
I don't disagree. Yes, three minutes, Anne?
Oh, no, not quite.
Sorry, Anne, I didn't mean to.
On this point, I remember when Trustee Havering.
Three minutes, Anne?
This is, well, I have my three minutes, but it's.
No, we're not, you know, you're not, you have three minutes here. We're not discussing this comment, three minutes, please.
Well, it was going to be helpful.
Three minutes, please.
I'm Major Stevenson. I've heard two different versions of what Mr. Ingerson's role is and so now there's confusion. The last I heard was from Mayor Hyde in a planning board when she said that Mr. Ingerson's role was going to be as code enforcement officer for the town and the village and code, you see, it's already confusing, zoning officer for the town and code enforcement officer for the town and the village. And Mr. Wilder would be zoning officer. So my first question on that basis is, what is the difference between what Mr. Ingerson does as code enforcement officer for the village and what Mr. Wilder is going to be doing as zoning officer for the village? There's a list of issues that break zoning code and need enforcement attention. So when do you go to Mr. Ingerson as code enforcement officer? When do you go to Mr. Wilder as zoning officer? It's really confused because initially, we got the impression that Mr. Wilder would be doing everything for the village that Mr. Ingerson has been doing and now it appears that work has been split between the two of them. It's confusing. Also, in the zoning board meeting on Monday, I know that when applications come in, Mr. Ingerson is in charge of the screen in both the planning board meetings and the zoning board meetings because he receives the information in on his personal email, I guess, so he controls the screen. So for example, this past zoning board. So, for example, this past zoning board meeting on Monday, he was controlling the screen, and then he got up and spoke on the subject, but it was a village zoning board matter to do with an area variance. Well, is he as code enforcement officer for the village involved with variances or not? Or is it Mr. Wilder? And finally, Mr. Ingerson's behavior in the ZB on Monday was appalling. At the end of the meeting, after it had been closed, Mr. Chairman of the Board made a comment to me about something he was concerned about in a document I wrote. I accepted his point. He was sitting roughly where Mr. Riddick is. I was sitting back there roughly where Mr. Frickman is, only further back. And once we had had that minor two-way conversation, which resulted relatively amicably, Mr. Ingerson got up from where he was in front of the screen, came and stood in front of the board and was going.
Thank you, thank you, Anne. Thank you.
And I will not accept that.
And that is perfectly fine. My recommendation is you make an appointment to speak with Mr. Wilder, make an appointment to speak with the town. They're two separate issues. This is, the board is not going to intervene with that. Thank you, though, for your comments. Anyone, anything else?
Can I just answer a little bit of the, so?
No, not really.
No? You don't want me to?
No. No, thank you, though. Could I, anything else? A motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Your board's side down there, Robert?
Yeah.
Got a package in front of you?
Oh, this is mine.
Okay.
It's wild.
All right. It's like a big package.
What else? I'm just hoping everybody.